And commit to working towards a respectful and collaborative relationship with all indigenous people. Thank you. Item number two, adoption of the agenda, any changes? Seeing none. Item three, declaration of conflict of interest or pecuniary interest. I have a conflict with item eight point three, a request for donation. Anybody else? Item number four, delegation, presentations or petitions. We have Aurora. Was I close? Here to present on behalf of the family of the late Tommy Williams. A presentation to be donated to the Roy Segal Arena. So get right to Scott. Normally you'd have to chair this fucking thing. Okay, so much.
There's researchers, that's inside, and pictures.
Very much. I'm going to leave this down here for now, so that everybody could have a look at it after the meeting. Again, some donation, probably it's the flag signed by, I believe, members of the Detroit Red Wings.
Yeah, and the players that went to Detroit as well.
And a flag. Or sorry, Tom's jersey. We'll make sure those are displayed in prom that way. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
No. Our family and myself are really honored to give these pictures of the flag and the jersey of my dad in memory of him. He was a longtime member in Inuvik. And he played a lot of hockey and coached a lot of hockey. And I know he is missed by everybody. We had good relationships with a lot of people around the Hoover Delta and all around the N W P. But we lived here 2001 to 2008 and did a really good job. Back before IRC started, him, Roy, I had none. And I can't remember the last person. They talked about having IRC Cup. And they, when they moved here in 2001, they, my dad wanted something for the youth with hockey, a big hockey tournament. And he started up a quick championship, but I know it's still a big tournament to this day. And I'm just happy that he did all this work for the community. And I know he's really missed by everybody. I don't know, but just wanted to say, um, thank you to everybody. Thank you to you guys for letting us do this over here for the Northern Games.
Thank you very much. Tom will definitely be missed.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you, Lordy.
Yeah, Tom will definitely be missed in that town. He did a lot for youth hockey and the state here, so thank you for that. Here, my public question period. Questions, no? Item six, adoption of the minutes of the July eighth and tenth, twenty twenty four council meetings. Any questions or corrections? Seeing none. Actions items list, item seven point one, any comments? Nothing. New business, eight point one. Council, twenty six, twenty eight, eight, council meetings. Motion, be resolved, now, now, here by council, be able to be scheduled for August six. And the regular, now, being scheduled for August twenty eight, twenty one, twenty twenty four. Normally, somehow, how, how, what, so, the people that are, make sense to do here, people, they, they, so on. Any comments? All right. Eight point two. So if you have any, I would be heard here. I've updated. Any questions? None, or eight point three? Yes.
Just, just a question, but just appreciation for the, for the update chart. And the removal of the items that have been either pleaded or.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Eight point three, I'm glad, um, Congress, so you can take share here for the one more, she would work.
Yeah, we have, we have some changers. So, uh, we do have still that, and. Yvonne. Sorry. Uh, if, uh, we also have some things to say. It is request for conversation for donation for the Western Arts Development Corporation Trade Show, October eighth, eighth and ninth, ninth, twenty twenty four. Um, total request by this time was four thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Um, everything later on their chart. So I guess first, uh, you have read on your, is that, or you could ask for the questions required? Good, good. This is a little, go on, and then any questions, cuts, cuts. I can't stop laughing.
All right, yeah, I'm happy, this is quite, quite, or, uh, well, I pay a very much for your application. Um, once, once, I guess, I guess, yes, there, yeah, and we're, we're, we're councilor. Um, we have not a property rate, uh, half, half, we'll, 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 we'll.
Yeah, sorry, I'm still trying to figure this out. So since our department is in here, I'm gonna take up some of his time, thank you. Just kidding. So we've been super busy over at the Rex Center. I mean, I mentioned it's already almost the end of July, so June was a whirlwind. We hosted the National Engineers People's Dating Partnership with GTC. They're fantastic to host with, very encouraging and understanding. So we had an event in Chiqui, Quinipar. Weather was great, it was lively, they brought food. People really enjoyed themselves. This is our first week back, our first year back of summer, I think about a four-year hiatus. We are full. Even people are waiting lists. You have my kid in, need my kid in. So we're trying to raise some of the wait lists. Last week we made some new neighbors, to me, colleagues camps, cultural activities. They made some often cooking things for us. International craft snacks type thing. So their kids are having a lot of fun. This year again, sold out, over 100 registered strengths. Whether it was rain, it was raining, no bears this year, so really, really, really good, really good. Candidly, there would be actually elements inside the current pad, contrary to a number of years where there was both the weather. But we had some kids' games and the Camp Caboonie. Camp Cerales for the winners of the trade as well as well. They'll be coming up on the next slide. Also, I can act now, was there last week. They were cleaned up now, so it was great dealing with that. They're really, really, they were super easy to deal with. So I think it really, really great for both sides. We're still, we're still a battle, I'm now doing a monitoring, I'm getting assessment. Just recently, I had a trench right out front, monitoring waters. Up there, and having the graphics, maybe it's a bit exaggerated, I mean, it's team. So we're so good, so good. We've learned some new things, reporting, so lots of learning going on there and there. I think we're gonna get ready to find out on this Friday. Fingers crossed. So for entry to reporting of this year, I've been invited to meet Jen. Summer camp, that would be definitely part of the same as we have. Sam Boy, we want first one, is donated money to the Community Events Society. That makes a fire. Family S's. Just something to mention, I'm saying that one day it was a really great clear night, some of the staff. Some of the residents, just another shot of the shark. Came up with the whole big intros to the Paris, Paris, the trail. Section of the Canada Trail. So we had the crews out there, grading the trail, parents were doing some brushing. They've also been doing a lot of playground meetings. Lots of long fields, trying to green the field, the lines are painted, daily games, grass cut. It also comes with some of a shot. Our pool's super large here, it's very shady. I'm gonna have a little gathering for Friday. Let's just send you for your dedication. You show operations and all the best. And then we're gonna keep on going, there's a little super going here guys later soon. Most of you may know, came started to start number ten later, on casual desk staff. We're all over the lot, it's been less than a month, five, ten, or a year. And progressively, that's everything where we are, we are. So just a snap of the hand, so we needed grass, grass, getting your foot, your door to door, the operating operation. So looking forward to the work of Kate. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Any questions? Mike, Steve?
I have two questions with the pool. What's up with a community that finds new ground? Or will that pool map?
Mine, we'll give that question to the S A O A and Cerberus Councilor Nick.
Thank you for the question. We actually met with the engineers today. And what they've been able to identify, thanks to the work of both Candy and Kate in terms of monitoring the water loss. So since we closed it down, it's been a process of determining where the water loss starts in the pool. So we've had to fill it up, bring it down, fill it up, bring it down. They've been able to identify where the major leaks are. They, it's around where the lazy river is. So they are currently coming up with a plan to close off those outlets. We're looking at getting a welder in, doing some of the welding, and then replacing the liner. From there, they're also determining if there's any other leaks. So once we have that, then we will be testing, is there anything else in there? The other thing that we've had them looking at is the structural integrity of the pool itself. So they're looking for any major cracks in any of the welds, or any distortion of the metal or anything like that. They haven't seen any of that, so that's good news. Means the structural integrity of the pool is good. And once we determine whether or not there's any more leaks. And we're prepared, I'm not making any promises when that is going to happen, because we're very grateful that in the coming months, we'll be able to confidently be able to open again. The thing with the trench that we were looking at is, I'm sure many people have noticed the water that's been in the parking lot. And what the engineers were able to determine, again, yes, there's a couple different theories that is actually bringing to the whole foundation of assessment. One of the theories with regard to our water in the parking lot was because of the amount of pool loss, it was over the winter. So the pool water had saturated the ground on the parking lot side, which of course froze. So now that we're thawing of that water, we're starting to see a rise. We've dug a trench just to see if there's any residual water in the hillside of the parking lot. And we're continuing to monitor that to see if it's going to dry up, if there's anything else in the trench that's coming up. So again, it's a matter of monitoring, we've identified some of where the leaks are. And we're testing a couple of other theories to make sure that we can disprove some of that. So we don't have any surprises once we are able to open again.
Any further questions? Next we have 10.3, Senior Admin Officer.
Actually, we're, can we do Corporate Services first? He was able to, because of whether he had a, he was able to get a presentation done for us.
Yeah, yeah, my, my, we already have, 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 and they tell us all the day. And the rest was, we didn't speak, I need to, uh, 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 since fourth possible. And we don't highlight, really, really, um, we spent a while, uh, last, last, two, two weeks, um, on the work, which was just a lot of projects, so a lot of work, a lot of work, a lot of line. And the other highlight, like, I won't, I won't ignore, uh, is the final, the final highlights with the O N M, with the B S S. On the, on the, on the place. So I wanted, very, very, that was, we gave it our time. And you see, I want to do the best, uh, on the, uh, has, I want to do, so that's, that's positive. Well, we have, we have, we have all, 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 all of our finances, uh, stacked up. Now, now, for this, now, so we have, we now, and I, 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 so, uh, land, land, so, so, and, and, uh, so that's, pretty, very, very happy about that. Then the, then the, and now, over the, the, and then, and then, the, 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 so, so.